I'll just turn it right over to Mr. Olaf and staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first thing I'd like to do, even though I think just before the meeting we did introductions, but I want to introduce our interim finance director, Russ Van Gompoel. Russ is filling in while we find a replacement for Trina Larson. We're expecting the recruitment process to take about three months from start to finish, and we've started that up. And I'll just give you a little background about Russ. I've known Russ for over 25 years now. He's been a finance director in communities in Minnesota and Wisconsin. He's also been a village administrator, manager, and city manager. Village of Little Shoot, the Village of Brown Deer in the Milwaukee area, and the City of Eau Claire. So Russ brings a lot of experience to the table, and I'm very familiar with his financial background. He's remained because he's been a finance person his whole career. He's still a member of the Governmental Finance Officers Association. I let mine lapse many years ago, so I know he has more street cred than I do on the financial side. Russ has jumped right on board. He started last Monday, and his first work was to get ready for tonight's meeting. Most of this is similar to what you've seen in the past, but I think Russ is up to speed on the issues I think you'll need to go through tonight. But similar to others, we've changed the format a tiny bit, but not that much. We're going to do a little historical look at taxes, revenues, and expenditures. And then our HR manager, Michelle Benke, is here. Mr. Fitzpatrick will be joining us shortly. Get into personnel assumptions and, you know, how we put that together, a discussion about debt. And then Mayor Paul Mary and I discussed, and we just had action last week where the council turned down the idea of a transportation utility fee to fund special assessments. But I think the discussion of special assessment reform, for lack of a better term, is still valid. And so I think at least just get back on the table on that. And then just assumptions that we're planning to give to departments in some direction, and give you an idea of levy projections based on some basic assumptions. There's going to be some eye openers tonight, so I want to alert you to that. And then get some general direction from you, and then we'll talk about future workshops. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Van Gompoel to go through the document that you have before you. There have been some last-minute changes that I think Russ and Jennifer, I think everybody knows Jennifer Messerschmidt, our assistant finance director, but both Russ and Jennifer have been working on making some last-minute updates after the document got bound, so there may be some substitute papers. So Russ, why don't you take it over?
Okay, thanks, Mark. So basically, we provided you with a handout, and the whole purpose tonight is to walk through the handout and give you kind of a historical look at the city of Oshkosh and how things have fallen into place, and where do we go from here? So that's the whole premise behind this. So if you open your booklet, we just have a brief introduction, our index to the booklet, the agenda for tonight's meeting. Before I got here, the city actually prepared a budget preparation calendar. That's on page three. I talked to the city manager, and I think one of the issues that might still be out there is, is it the final public hearing, the budget hearing on the sixth? And I think that was changed last year because of some other things happening within the city, namely the Business Improvement District Holiday Parade, and confirmed that that's actually going to occur on November 14th. So I don't know if you still want to do that on a Wednesday, if you want to move that to a Tuesday. We still have some time if you want to change that. But this was following the calendar that was put together last year. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments on the calendar or the timeline. And the process itself is a series of workshops and reviews, and then a public hearing, and then the final adoption of the budget. So yes, Mayor?
Yes, I just see that we still have a TBD for September for the CIP review with the Plan Commission. Do you know when we'll have a date on that?
I have not talked to the city manager about that yet.
Okay.
But that's a good question. We'll try to get that answered for you before our next work session.
I thought we tentatively had it for the 18th of September. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, the Plan Commission. Normally, normally that'll be done at the first meeting. It'll really be a, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the council workshop. I apologize.
CIP with the plan?
It really is going to depend if we have the CIP done. Ms. Larson and I pretty much finished the CIP before she left, so we're in good shape on that. It's just a matter of putting the final touches on it. We balanced it. We balanced it to two years. So I expect that it will be on the September 3 Plan Commission agenda. Thank you for pointing that out.
In regards to the budget hearing on the sixth, isn't there some connection between the budget hearing and then also when the budget's published in the newspaper, and then basically the backdating of that?
Yeah, there's some statutory notices of when we have to get that out. So we, you know, we have time to get that out. That notice has, and I can't remember the exact deadline, but there are some deadlines.
Good.
Fifteen days? Yeah, I think we backed into that for the budget publication date. It'll probably likely want to keep on the sixth only because we do have Plan Commission on the Tuesday, the 5th, and that would, there'd be some back-to-back challenges with this room, which is our workshop room and our Plan Commission room. So probably November 6th will continue to be the date.
Good.
The other question I have, this came up in the last couple of years, too. So we have September 23rd and 27th for budget refinement or revisions. And I think that we, there's a period of time that the council members can submit items leading up to that. Is that our kind of drop-dead date in terms of submitting revisions?
No, that is an internal.
Oh, internal.
That's the week where we go into marathon mode to do the refinements. After the council receives the budget on October 11th, which will be at the Friday after the council, after the first council meeting in October. Normally, what we do is we'll have after the budget workshop on the 6th, the council will give us some direction on the 6th. And I believe also in the meeting on October 29th, at the end of the two-day-long budget workshops, we get some feedback from council on changes. So I think we do subsequent, every Friday until the budget's adopted. And anything else comes to mind, let us know, and we'll include those.
So is that clear for our new members, when you can submit revisions? Okay.
Okay, so if we're done with the calendar, I'd really like to start and take a little look at shared revenue. And the reason I chose to start with, in looking at shared revenue, is just to kind of give you a little background on shared revenue. I actually made a revision, the numbers still stand from 2009 to 2019, but I went back a little bit further after this booklet was put together. And we'll do a handout real quickly. Actually, going back to the year 2000, and let me just share a little editorial about, we still in Oshkosh use the term shared revenue, but statewide, they have actually changed the name of the program to county and municipal aid, which is, I think, a misnomer. When the program was started in 1911, it really was the creation of the state income tax. And at the time the state income tax was created, they decided to share some of that with the local units of government. Technically, when the program started in 1911, actually 70% of the income tax collected in the state of Wisconsin was returned to the municipalities. 20% went to the counties, and the other 10% stayed with the state for administering the program. That all changed in 1972, and this, they called it shared revenue because it returned to the area where it was collected. They went to distributing the shared revenue based on need, and there's a long funding formula that looks at cost and looks at spending. But in 1972, it took away this return of origins type of concept and went to a replacement based on needs. And they set up a formula that determined how many or what was the need of each municipality. And that formula started working in 1972 and went forward to the year 2001. And in 2001, that formula base actually changed, and they started allocating based on needs, based on the prior year. So that has been going on since 2001. In 2004, there was a huge reduction, about $75 million, and that was a statewide decision on the state budget with that cut the funding for shared revenue by 75 million. There was a small cut in 2010 of about $6.8 million to local governments. And in 2012, there was another 59, almost $60 million reduction. So the handout I gave you this evening shows the historical perspective for the city of Oshkosh from 2000, and you can kind of see the dollar amounts increase up to 2003. And in 2004 was that first drop. And then you'll see a small reduction in 2010, a larger reduction in 2012. It's basically held the same since then. So the formula that was used is really no longer used. They kind of look at what was provided the previous year and do some budgetary adjustments. And so for 2019, right now, we are estimating that we'll collect just under $10 million, $9,687,776, in shared revenue. So that goes a fairly significant portion of our total revenues in the general fund. Our total revenues in the general fund in 2019 will be $46 million. So I just wanted to give you a little history on shared revenue so you can kind of understand that major component. The other thing is I put a chart in your handout that showed kind of a stack bar chart that shows all other general fund revenues and what kind of percentage that plays of the total. So you can see that. But I'd also like to hand out a, just on another revision, because I went back and looked at just the general fund tax levy. And you can kind of trace from 2009 through 2018 in kind of a linear fashion, and also with some numbers that you'll see what's happened with the general fund levy. And there's levy going into the general fund, but there's also levy for other funds that are called special revenue funds, and that's just an accounting term. So this is only a portion of the levy that stays within the general fund, which is the primary accounting tool for our operations. And we'll talk about the expenditure side, where that all goes, but this just shows the general fund levy portion. So sorry for getting that to you kind of last minute, but just wanted to give you some information so you can kind of see historically what has happened to the general fund levy, the shared revenue program, and then other revenues that come into our general fund. I don't know if there's any questions about shared revenue or any other revenues that come into the general fund. This is just general fund only at this point.
Well, this still represents probably our second-largest revenue after property taxes, and as it gets frozen over these years or cut, as Russ showed, you know, historically, whenever we have a cut at the state level, it has to get made up somewhere, and it's typically fallen on the local levy. So, you know, the dilemma is, we all recognize that we are over-reliant on property taxes in Wisconsin, but the state's non-shared revenue makes it very difficult for us to lower property taxes when the share of, whether it's income taxes, as Russ talked about historically, or sales taxes, when the state's not sharing, we're stuck increasing our levy to do that.
Or our dependence on other revenue sources, fines, fees, charges, those type of things. And we can talk about that later, but there's those, that pressures on the other revenue sources.
I guess a better way to say this is, we're never going to see an increased revenue source from the state. I mean, is that accurate?
That's pretty true.
Without major reform.
I mean, we do, based on how the budget's created, and for 2020, we're estimating that shared revenue will be frozen. We know that, just based on the state budget.
I think former finance director Ms. Larson had mentioned, and Mr. Olaf, the potential for the premier resort. Was that a convention center?
There's, no, there's, you can have a sales tax for a premier resort area, but that requires a separate piece of legislation from the state of Wisconsin. It's not something you can enact locally. The last time I looked, and I haven't looked recently, we were looking, I think, about five communities, Wisconsin Dells, Rylander, Milwaukee.
Monaca.
Door County. So there's only four or five in state that have that premier resort tax or sales tax.
My information may be wrong, but I don't think anybody who's applied for it and requested it has been denied, though, either. I think the five or six that have requested it have been granted. I don't know that anybody's been denied.
I think there has been. And I don't have any research to back that up, but I, in just talking to other finance and administrator type of folks, I think the last one that was added was Rylander. I'm not 100 percent certain.
Yeah, they're like $17, $18,000 a year. It's not a lot of money.
Yeah.
And I don't even know if we'd have, maybe our marinas at best could be considered premier. We don't.
No, no, it's done on all sales. They just call it a premier resort area because that's the methodology that the state allows you to use to collect that sales tax.
Ticket sales, gas, anything. And there's a lot of things that qualify under it.
Okay, so if we're, the information we're presenting to you tonight on page six is really total levy for all of our funds. And again, we do have the general fund and then some other special revenue funds that have a levy. We do have the change in the levy. We do have other revenue sources. Again, total of all of your, what we call general tax-supported funds. And just on a linear basis showed what the levy's doing in those, all the funds together with other revenue sources. And you see, we've actually crossed the line. And so now we're more dependent on levy than other revenues when you look at all of the funds combined. This does not include utilities. This is just the funds that are supported by a levy. So if you look on page seven, you take, and then just make sure everybody's on the same page. The thing to note is, the levy is what you really control through your budget process. And then the levy is actually spread to each individual property owner based on their valuation. So the levy divided by the valuation comes up with a rate. And that's usually done on the assessed value, and the assessed value is typically the value, well, it's defined as the value placed on by the assessor. There's also value called an equalized value, and that's, equalized value is a true reflection of market value of a piece of property. Communities don't, typically aren't at 100% of the assessed value. They're either a little bit above, a little bit below. And the state actually requires that if you're more than 10% in variance, either below or above, then you're required, if you do that for three years, you're required to go through a process called a revaluation, in which you reevaluate the entire community, or have a process in place to do that. So if you look at the valuation trends for the city of Oshkosh, it's relatively flat. There has been some changes in assessed value, and most recently, we've seen a little bit of a spike in the equalized value, and that's because the market is pacing a little bit higher than some of the changes we're able to do on the assessed value. Another thing to note is, the equalized value is also used to spread tax levies from jurisdictions across municipal boundaries, i.e. the county, the technical colleges, and school districts. So if that levy is going across different jurisdictions, they actually spread it between jurisdictions on the equalized basis, but then you reallocate it back to the property owner based on the assessed basis. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So just a little chart showing the kind of the trends on the valuation, and then the trends on the different rates of the assessed versus the equalized rate. And you can kind of see the upward trend on the assessed rate. And then, again, that's that decrease in the rate, because the, it's a mathematical formula. The valuation in Oshkosh in 2019 actually increased by 3.65%. So we had that increase in the valuation, so the rate went down.
I would point out, the part of the increase in the recent years was the closures, primarily of TIF 7. So you can see, as Russ said, for the better part of this decade, we've had actually low reduction in our values, and a large part of that is because, and we've had additions, we've had extra construction going, $30, $40 million a year. But the net reduction is due to exemptions for personal property that have been made over the years, as well as a lowering of manufacturing values. We don't have, we don't assess at the, we don't assess manufacturing properties. That's done by the state of Wisconsin, and those have been going down in recent years. So that's been shifting the taxes from manufacturing and businesses to residential. And that's been pretty much the trend for the entire decade, at least for us.
So not only does the state control our revenue share, they also control what they're doing to business valuations in our community beyond our control?
Only manufacturing values.
Manufacturing.
Okay.
But other commercial type of businesses.
So our big manufacturers, but the state is still driving that down on our big manufacturers?
Yeah.
I mean, let's be candid.
Yeah, that's, Jake, who's managing the controls here tonight, he's in the city of Manawha. The city of Manawha had a huge reduction. They lost nearly half of their community's value based on one business because they were, that small community is a microcosm of the larger issue that we're all experiencing, because that was one business, that was the business in town. That value went down, and it.
The paper mill?
Yeah, and it just, it raised the taxes for everybody else as a result of that reduced value. It wasn't that they left, it was just that their value was reduced, and that's a real challenge. This is a much smaller area of reduction, but I think it just represents the, what's been happening over the past decade.
And I think council knows, just as Russ and city manager Olaf are saying, you know, the reverse then is what we're interested in. The more expansion, the more development we have, the more revenue we can generate, and then it has that positive impact on the rate for everyone else.
And before we leave page seven, there is one correction that was noted after the booklet was put together. If you look at the levy, the gray section, in 2017, the number's correct, the $36,297,700. But the change from the previous year, and I did not input these numbers, these are the numbers I was working with, is actually incorrect. The dollar change is set at $2,963, should be $2,011,000 even, if you just do the math. And it's portrayed as an 8% increase in the levy. It actually was a 6.03% increase in the levy, and I apologize for that, that I did not catch that earlier. But in reviewing for the presentation this afternoon or this evening, I noted that that was incorrect. So if you could make that change, that'd be great.
And remind me, when do we receive our finalized equalized value numbers?
Those numbers should be out in the next couple of weeks or so. Before we get heavy and actually adopt the 2020 budget, we'll have those, at least a pretty good estimate on it. Getting into the technical terms, we'll know the, and we get a breakdown on the assessed valuation between, you know, the local, the residential and the commercial. We always have a little bit of a lag when we get the numbers reported back to us from the state on the manufacturing. So we may have to do some estimates on that, but we'll get you what we have and what's released as soon as we can get it. So that's kind of a look at the revenue side of things. So I think we want to translate over to the expenditure side. And Oshkosh has done a really good job in the past, and Mark talked to me, the city manager, talked to me about doing a graph on revenue and expenditures. But really, because we're looking at budgeted numbers, we typically do a balanced budget where revenue equals expenditures, which is something I think you want to see. But there are communities in Wisconsin that sometimes the revenue may be higher, or sometimes the expenditures may be higher. You may want to add to your fund balance or draw down on your fund balance. But for the last 10 years, we've been budgeting pretty much a balanced budget. So what you're seeing here is the expenditure history over the last 10 years. We break it down by the different types of funds, especially those that are, these are the ones, again, controlled by levy. So we have the general fund, other funds, debt service. And then we'll talk about debt service and debt a little bit later in our presentation. But these are the monies that we have to levy to pay for principal and interest payments on debt that's already been issued. But you can kind of see what's happened on the expenditure side of things. We've got the numbers, and then just a graph below that. So just remember, I believe these are all actual, not actual, but budgeted numbers. So you're looking at budget to budget on this graph. So in 2019, we had a 3% increase in budgeted expenditures. There was some small money going towards agency funds that went away in 2019. But the debt service was $20 million, other funds was $8 million, and the general fund was $46,650,000. Any questions on what's happening on the expenditure side of things? Another way to look at it on page 10, you know, we've did a budget to budget comparison. This is actual year-end expenditures. And I broke the expenditures down to categories, and for municipalities and government operations, we have general government, which is just, you know, administration, support services, by that, you know, assessing and finance.
Basically, everybody's this end of the table.
Yeah.
But Russ, pardon my interruption, but why do we care about looking at budget to budget versus actual to actual? I mean.
I kind of question that myself. One thing is, you know, when you're looking at the budget, and you look at how your budget was presented to you last year, you may want to kind of take that into consideration. But you also really want to take into how you really spend the money.
Right.
That's why we went into page 10 to show you the actual expenditures. And this is, again, just the general fund expenditure, so it's not those other funds. But public safety is another major category. The state actually tells you what your major categories have to be, because we all do a uniform set of reporting to the state of Wisconsin. So that would be police and fire, public works, parks and other facilities, community development, transportation, and then our other unclassified type of expenditures that are pretty minimal. But this is actual dollars out. And when you look at the change from 2009 to 2018, we're looking at about a 1% growth per year on expenditures, and just kind of giving you a historical trend. And you can kind of see that the emphasis really is becoming a lot more on public safety, police and fire, which a lot of people expect. And those expenditures are changing from year to year, and we'll talk about how that's changing from 2019 to 2020 in a little bit. But this just kind of lays it out on what, where that piece of the pie is going.
One of the things I'd like to point out, because if you take a look at this average, the average annual growth rate for this, basically a whole decade, is 0.9% annually. But our tax. percent annually, but our tax rate has gone up at a much higher rate than the expenditure growth, and that really reflects the loss of revenues. When we, when the state cuts our revenues, when we don't, when we're limited in what we can increase in fees, the reality is fees amount to a very small part of our whole budget. So point nine percent growth in expenditures, but our levy continues to go up, and that's a challenge that, that we have, because when we don't have revenues in other areas, we just go to, we go to the old, the old reliable, which is very difficult for us, but that's, that gives you a good idea. Some of these areas, I would say, especially, for example, with community development, we moved inspections out a couple of years ago, that's probably his bigger reason, we make that its own enterprise fund, so it, it requires, it's self-sufficient, and so we don't rely on general tax dollars for inspection, so that's one of the reasons there's probably a lesser-
So are there salaries also attached to that fund?
Yep. Salaries and revenues all go out.
So if you turn to page eleven, you'll see-
We're segueing, we're segueing really.
You're segueing right into, okay, so how much of this expenditure is really on the personnel side of things versus non-personnel? And we break it down between our direct labor and indirect labor, they give us our total personnel costs, and then that, how that relates to what we spend for contractual services, utilities, fixed charges, materials and supplies, and capital, and just did a chart here to kind of, to look at that, and, you know, if, if somebody were to talk to you, seventy-five percent of our expenditures are personnel. We, we're in the business of providing a service, we're not in the business of making widgets, so the quite, you would expect it to be higher in personnel costs because we're providing services. So just to kind of a brief synopsis on, on what's happening on our personnel side of things.
Could someone just remind me real quick what we put into unclassified?
So that would be like razor removal type things, anything that doesn't fall into the normal categories of general government administration.
Legal fees.
Legal fees, yep. It's just, it's kind of-
It's just kind of a catch-all.
Catch-all, yep.
We sometime, we put the pay for performance raises in that classification as well, and-
Retirement payouts go in there too, I believe.
Yeah, the retirement payout, so that's, we've done that in recent years, because the, with the growing number of retirements we have, we don't want to, you know, bank on, this department is going to have their retirements and this one isn't. What we do is we budget them in a central location, so it doesn't matter where the retirements come out of, that we have it funded, and it doesn't, we don't give a budget to a department that doesn't need that. When, when the person retires, those funds are needed, and then we'll just, we'll pay for it out of that budget. We'll end up moving things around. The accountants clean all, everything up at the end of the year, but if somebody retired in public works, after that person gets their retirement payout of their unused sick leave vacation, then we'll, we'll move the budgeted funds in there as well as charge that person.
We did that about, what, five, six years ago? We moved it?
Yeah.
Because it was affecting department budgets and made it look like they were over?
Yeah.
I think that was five or six years ago, council instructed us to, or instructed staff to move that to unclassified.
Yeah, and it's, and it's a difficult decision or discussion to have with an employee, say, when do you plan to retire? It's, it's like you're forcing them out the door. This way, if we know about it, we statistically know the number, and we've been working off statistics, and quite honestly, we've been doing pretty well on knowing that number. I'm not suggesting that you're planning to retire.
It's a long time.
It's a long time, Bob, yeah, it's like-
And I would, I would add too, I think it's, it also helps us set some money aside, so we aren't, we don't have that-
It allows us not to have to go back and open up a budget item, because the money is in unclassified to cover that gap, depending what it is.
Or go into fund balance, which was-
I think All Raise Finance had weighed in on that at that time, too.
Some of, one of, some of the big things, big items that are in the unclassified are like the dark store payouts that we had, that gets put to that area, so that's a big dollar amount. I know we kind of forgot about that.
So when they pay their, their amount that they want in court, that's where that goes?
That's where we charge it to, and that's considered a write-off for the city, so it's an uncollectible account, so-
Yeah, and that's where, doesn't some of our ambulance stuff go in there too, uncollectibles for that too? Or is that separate?
That's separate, that goes right to ambulance, but on that unclassified budget, half of that budget is uncollectible accounts, so it's done, the city's not going to be able to collect.
Yeah, all the joint currency payments.
Aren't ambulance write-offs in there as well?
That's why I just asked.
I can't answer that for sure, Mark.
I thought we put them in there.
I thought that's what was said last year.
Yeah.
I, I can check on that and get back to you.
And then that's all the bankruptcies with people that owe water bills and-
So water stuff will stay with water.
Oh, that stays with-
Yep, but this is just general fund.
General fund, okay.
Uncollectibles.
Uncollectible, all right.
Can, can I just ask one more clarification? You talked about legal fees, is that legal fees across the board for all departments, or is that just-
So that would be specific to certain items. I know, like, some of the issues that we, some of the things where we have been doing a lot more razor removals, and the legal fees that come with trying to process those have been getting charged to that unclassified budget. We now, in 2019, we moved that out of there and actually put that into the attorney's budget.
And the attorney's budget would be up in general government.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I, yes, there's pros and cons to doing that. I mean, if, if we're going to continue doing razor removals, I'm assuming that there's a end of life on these, if, if we're, if we've got a surge in business here, so to say, I, I don't know if we want to do that.
And it, it, you know, I know in eighteen, we had a substantial amount of razor removals, and then in years prior, we had none, so it's, it just is really kind of a reflection of how our economic-
Right.
You can see that that number over the years goes up and down, and that's just, it's based on, you know, the economy goes bad, a lot of people, you know, you have issues where people aren't doing things, so it, I mean, it was, it was up to a million three in 2017, but it dropped to under a million one, so it, it varies, and, and in recent years, a lot of that's been retirement payout, so we probably didn't have as many retirement payouts as we thought. We're still holding on to that money for, for, for those times when they, when they do-
I guess I'm more pro to keep things itemized as opposed to bunching them together is my point. Is that, is that a little better way to say it?
Yeah, and, and the other thing is, you know, we're just presenting some historical trends here this evening, when we actually get to the nuts and bolts of the budget and what's being requested or recommended for where 2020, you'll see that, and you can, you know, we'll get into the kind of, you know, where things are, are being planned for 2020. This is not really to get into that discussion this evening, this is just kind of giving you some historical trends. So we, so we talked, I also kind of briefly mentioned the, the personnel to non-personnel expenses, and I, we didn't kind of jump back, I didn't know if there was any additional questions or comments on the, on the page eleven that deals with the, the history and of personnel to non-personnel. So that's kind of expenditures and personnel and non-personnel. Now I want to get into some, how we're looking at wages, benefits, health insurance, dental for 2020, and so we have a summary page, we, we put together a summary based on current staffing levels and, and allocated positions. Some of those positions still are not filled, but we, we anticipate that they will be, so we just took a look at what was planned and, and supported in taxes and other non-general fund-supported budgets, and, and looked at that. We did wages and benefits, and so yeah, the first box is in 2019, the second box is our, our rough estimate for 2020, and if we keep everything the same, and we actually built in an assumption of two point five percent wage adjustment across the board. And this also takes into consideration adjustments that are planned, so if somebody gets hired and we know that they'll be having a step increase in 2020, this is all accounted for in this estimate.
Two and a half for non-represented folks.
And whatever our union contracts are, we have those built in, and those vary depending on how they're negotiated.
So based on those calculations, we're looking at almost a five, almost a six percent increase in wages and, and benefits, and, and some of that is broken down. FICA stays the same, but I can tell you that WRS, which is the Wisconsin retirement system, that's changing for what we call general employees, that's a separate category than protective service, and, and they're at different rates because of the, the expense and exposure of, of protective service, so that's all built into the, those numbers, and so-
Just for clarification, the wage, the benefits in this section are wage-based benefits, they're all a function of, of wages versus healthcare and dental, which are not a function of wages. The health insurance I get is the same as the health insurance any other employee gets, it's the same plan, and the wages and benefits, it's, it's all a formula-driven. So WRS rates, FICA rates, all those things go into, go into the upper part of that, to give you an idea. So anytime wages move, those benefits move, not just by, not just by the rates that are going up, and that's what Russ was talking about, but also based on their, their actual wages.
And Russ has a more detailed breakdown of the changes with WRS a little bit later on, so you can see exactly which ones are, how much each one is moving up, each category.
Let me just get real specific, I guess, real quick, and I know this is historical overview, and it's not budget review, but looking at that page right there, you're telling me that seventy-five percent of my, our budget this year is personnel costs, and of that seventy-five percent, you're already base budgeting five point one percent increase for personnel costs.
Yes.
Fantastic.
You'll actually, don't jump ahead, but there's a page, there's a page where you can really-
Where you're going to have to swallow hard.
See what's what that means.
Right.
We have that figured out.
But you can see for general fund, you can see the, if you move over two columns to the left, Matt, it's two million, two fifty-five, that is levy impact, so it's a-
A big levy impact.
It's a big levy impact, and I, I took a note, I'm just going to, for the upper part, the wage and benefits, there's really four primary factors that are going into this. The first one is the, the across-theboards, and we've put in two and a half percent for all of our non-representeds, but also we have all of our, our fire union contract is calling for a three percent increase, two and a half for police, and two for transit. There's reasons that they're different, but the council has given us direction to have a, an amount over a three-year period. We achieved those objectives, it's just that how it got mixed in, depending on when benefits change and things like that, but you can see that they vary, but that's, that's just one factor. Steps for new employees, and I think it's real important to point that out, because over the last couple of years, we've benefited financially, when you think about it, we have employees who retire, and they're generally at the top of the scale. The starting wage for that person's replacement is generally about thirty-two and a half percent less than that person, and when I say that, the top, the absolute top of the range is twenty percent above the control point, the starting wage is twelve and a half percent below the control point, so that spread is thirty-two and a half percent. So we do benefit that when we hire somebody at, when we hire a replacement, we start them at a much lower wage, but as they develop their skills in, in the position, we move them up through the grade to get them to the control point, and then based on merit, pass the control point.
And the control point is the market rate, just for your information.
So we're, a good point, because that means we're-
We hire them-
Twelve and a half percent below market.
Right.
And that's until they, they master the position, and that, they require that, but as we're moving them up through, as they are mastering their position, that two, it's roughly a two and a half percent step. So you've got the across-theboard, plus for new employees or newer employees, it's, it's a two and a half percent step. Then there's also the WRS, as Russ mentioned, you know, that rate, as we'll see later, that's a big part of it, and then there are some new employees that were added that we only budgeted a portion of the year, and now they're going to be budgeted the full year. Think of the staff that was added to the police department, so that's just, it's, it's like a new employee, we, we implemented about mid-year, so we only had to budget for half a person. Now we have those people who are budgeting the full year. So those four factors are probably the biggest part of that, so it's not like, you know, individual employees getting a five point four eight percent increase, but when you add it all in, the costs go up five point four eight percent.
Generally, approximately, how long does it take them to get to the steps, to get to the market rate? How many years?
They start at step one, and they're at, I think, the control point is step six.
That'd be five years.
Five years.
Five years to get to the control point.
And they can move up quicker based on performance, or is it just that's a set every year?
Yep, they have, non-reps have the opportunity to receive pay-for-performance awards if their performance evaluation is above average, so that's another component that I think Mark mentioned, but, but that step system, that, it's pretty common in the public sector to have that step system, and we have kind of what's called a hybrid system, where it's steps, so it's below the market till you get to the control point, people step up every year, and, and then after the control point, it's kind of an open range, and then people advance with across-theboards, but also they can place those pay-for-performance amounts on the base also. Once they get to that, what we like to call PFP land, that's, then they can do that when they are at the full performance level, once they get to the market rate, the control point.
So those are the four factors that are, are contributing to that, that increase. But fortunately, on the health and dental side, you can see that we have modest increases projected. Three point eight percent for health insurance, and that's what we know as of, as of today. We know from our current provider that it won't be more than three point eight percent. So we're still going to shop it and see what we can get.
Absolutely, yes.
But conservatively speaking, we want to count on the three point eight. And dental, we're looking at a three percent increase, but there, you're seeing a reduction there, because now that we've implemented health insurance for the public safety folks, we have a better idea who's in and who's out on insurance, and not everybody took it, which was okay by us, and we, we're saving a little more, so we're adjusting to what we project to be the actual number of people who will take advantage of it. If an employee's spouse has a, a better dental plan, they'll, they'll stick with that plan. They seldom go to both plans, because then you're paying double rate, so we, we know that we've got a better feel for usage of dental insurance now that we have a little experience, but-
And Mark mentioned earlier, you know, the council talked to us about our, what our parameters were for collective bargaining, and one of the things that the new council members may not know is, police, fire, and transit, we didn't have, they didn't have a dental benefit. That was one thing that was missing in their benefit package, and that's pretty rare in, in modern times to not have that option for employee. So in those years that they, that we implemented that component, then they took, they took a reduced pay increase that those years too. So that's why some of the changes with the pay, you know, differ from one group to the next. So transit did theirs in the first year of the three-year agreement, police and fire did it in the second year of their agreement.
Two questions, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Elif, just, I thought a couple of years ago, when the Three Waves clinic was created and implemented, that, that that was going to help us kind of avoid some of these, obviously, we can't avoid all increases, but where is that planned here?
Oh, I thi- I think it reflects, if you take a look over long-term in terms of our healthcare costs, I think our healthcare costs have been held in check as a result of that. We're, I think we periodically produce a report that projects how much we've saved as a result of the clinic, and I think other communities that have done this have, have gotten similar results. I think that helps keep the increase down, and we're still looking for ways to encourage people to steer them towards the clinic, because it just offers a, a more cost-effective healthcare alternative.
Right, city manager Roth is right, I would say in the last five years, this, the previous year, we were flat with our health insurance increase, but years prior, we had reductions in our health insurance program, so that really helped. I know the, when the council needed to make decisions about the operating budget, you know, it helped a little bit to have that flexibility, because we weren't going up, we weren't going down.
I was going to point that out, sorry, but that last year was a flat, there was a zero increase.
I think so, I think-
They were very close, and part of the, to attribute it to the investments that were made by previous councils in the Three Waves and just other health and wellness initiatives.
And I'm glad you said it that way. I think, you know, when we first proposed the idea, the clinic, to the council, it was, it was kind of a risk, because there weren't a lot of public sector organizations that- that really had employee clinics. But they were willing to take that chance. And I think, at least so far, it's been, it's been successful for us. It's helped us out.
Did they cite why, you know, even with the 3%, or the 3.8% increase of, like, why it was going up?
Sure. We, the market right now is about an 8% increase, market-wide, and our utilization is pretty good. You know, the, when health insurance companies take a look at, you know, how your program is doing, it's really price times utilization. And our utilization is about, I think, 86% or something like that was the last.
Mid-eighties, yeah.
It was, well, actually, I think we were as good as 83%.
83%. So that, that reduced, reduction in utilization, and it's hard to know precisely why, but I think, you know, if they're healthier employees, if they're utilizing the clinic, the reduced usage, you know, provides an opportunity where if we're shopping our fully insured program to other insurance companies, they, those businesses look at that, and they, they wanna make money. They don't wanna have to pay out large claims. So when they see an organization that's utilizing their business a lot less, they think that that's a good investment for them, and then they're willing to provide us a reduced rate. So I think all those things really work to our advantage.
But, oh, sorry. So, like, I remember when we were self-funded.
Yes.
And then now, you know, transitioning over, I know, like, retirements impact the number of retirees, because typically when they do.
Yep.
A lot of things that need to be done.
Fixed.
Yeah. Hip replacements.
People get stuff fixed before they retire, you mean?
They tend to retire. And so I know that we've talked about, you know, upcoming retirements or a number of retirements happening.
Right.
So, you know, assuming that they, you know, that trend will continue.
Yep, I think that's a safe bet.
Will that impact our increase?
I, I think it could, and, and I think it would be an interesting overlay, and I guess I'm looking at Michelle, because she's working on all of our KPIs and our graphs to take a look. We have some demographic graphs, you know, and then to overlay that with our insurance costs, just to see, to see if we can kind of project when those spikes are gonna take place, if we have a big bubble. But it's just hard to know when people want, can retire. It's just an individual circumstance for everybody.
To Mr. Roloff's point, it's, you don't wanna go to employees.
Yeah.
So, by the way, you know, more projections, because that's, you know.
Sure.
I think in the aftermath of Act 10, and that, you know, the aftermath of Act 10 really coincided with the beginning of the baby boomer retirement years. And so, you know, was it Act 10? Was it demographics? It was a little bit of both. And now I think things have, have calmed down, where, and then because of the cost of health insurance, there are fewer employees retiring early. They hang on a little longer, because the cost of health insurance that they would have to assume upon retirement is a bit daunting, and so they.
Yes, it is.
I think that's the biggest fear, for every employee when they retire.
I think the deputy mayor speaks from experience.
Very much so.
I guess I have still, I still have two questions. I think Deb answered one of them. So we no longer self-insure, is that accurate, based?
Right now, we're not self-insured, but when we got out of the self-insurance business, council directed us to put that money in a, in a reserve fund. So it's there when and if, and I would say there's a good likelihood we would like to become self-insured at some point in the future, because then we can control that, those monies, and we're large enough where I think it makes sense. But we've been getting such good offers from fully insured folks, that it was, they were kind of offers we couldn't really refuse in the last several years.
And is, is stopgap insurance still part of this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
For self-funding, it is. And for those folks that don't know what that is, it's, if, you know, we're a pretty big organization, so we can absorb, absorb some risk as our own insurance company. But there are some, there can be some catastrophic costs with, you know, babies and all kinds of unique things that the medical community has available to, to treat conditions right now. So as, as Bill was mentioning, you know, they look at our utilization, and I talked about before, they also look at reports where we have high claims, high-cost claims. And then when, when stop-loss companies look at us, if we were self-insured, they would say, "Well, you know, Fitzpatrick looks like a risk." And maybe we're.
And you certainly are.
And I am, yes. And maybe we should laser that person out, so that might not be someone who's included, and there might be a different cost.
Much higher deductible.
Much higher deductible for that high-risk individual. But we've been doing really well so far, and we, we take a look at that on a regular basis.
At this point, we're not subject to that, because we don't.
Because we're fully insured, and then they take all the risk. Those fully insured companies take all the risk.
All right, now, let me ask my second question. Then what percentage do our, of our, what percentage do our people pay of our health insurance?
They pay 12% with, if they agree to take a health risk assessment. And if they do not, they pay 15% of the premium.
And one of the things we've done in recent years, even though we haven't increased the, the percent of the premium paid, we've increased our deductibles and our co-pays in recent years. And part of that is also due to the fact that we have limitations with our unionized employees, where we, we have the ability to change the plan.
Plan design?
The plan design, thank you. But we can't just unilaterally change the premium percentage. So when we've made adjustments, we've made adjustments to the plan design. And that's increasing deductibles and co-pays. But we haven't done it on the premium side, because for the unions, union-represented employees, that would require us to negotiate that. And we're not required to negotiate the, the plan design.
Plan design.
So we've, we've used that route, rather than try to negotiate something.
But I would say too, you know, we have a health insurance committee, and the, and the employees understand that, you know, it's really one big pot of money. And the more we spend on health insurance, the less money there is available for everything else, including staffing, pay increases, all that sort of thing. So I, I think they've, they're mindful of that, they understand that. And, you know, correspondingly, when we get to the bargaining table, I, I know there are some other communities that have used a different strategy, where they kind of threaten to put employees in a substandard plan with an extremely high deductible. And I think, you know, we've been able to avoid that, because it's, I think, all the groups. It was especially difficult after Acts 10 and 32, but all the groups understand that, you know, they're all in this, in this problem together. So, I mean, it's been something that I think is, has been appreciated, certainly.
I just wanna ask about the, the utilization. I know we talked about catastrophic, but on the end, other end of the spectrum, for those kind of lesser items, are the Three Waves Clinic or are our plans utilizing telemedicine at all for reducing costs?
When we looked at the Three Waves Clinic, we did all kinds of different research initially. We, we visited different clinics, we looked at different opportunities. And one of the things that I would say we underestimated when we first started the clinic was how difficult it would be to recruit docs. And although we have a great provider, I think getting those docs and having them in place and creating that stability, and then the other next part of it is, because, you know, we had never run a clinic before, was having the doctors establish relationships with our employees. That just took longer than we thought, and we had some turnover of some of the people that were at the clinic. And, and then I think for those employees, accepting that this would be a good place for them to go, and they'd feel comfortable doing it, it took a longer amount of time. So not only did that, I think, just slow down some of the other dreams we had for the clinic, but we've looked at telemedicine. The clinic that we looked at in Sheboygan has a significant amount of specialty folks there, like chiropractors. So they can, they reviewed their costs, their high-cost areas, and then they decided to staff based on the, the costs of the plan and the, the organization. And they felt that having those chiropractors available at the clinic would help reduce their costs, and in their case, they did. But we've also looked at, believe it or not, the potential of dental, the telemedicine. There's all kinds of different things, but I think we, we were grateful, the council took the risk, and we just didn't wanna expand too rapidly. We wanted to just get our feet under ourselves, be successful, and then kind of take baby steps going forward. And I, I believe the staff is pretty staff.
So we are not using, we are not using telemedicine.
Not, not at this point, no.
We're in year, what, six, five?
Yeah, I think it is, I think it is year five.
But if I remember correctly, Mr. Fitzpatrick, because we looked at this option, because it was kind of like a new trend of, of how to reduce health insurance costs.
Yes.
And if I remember correctly, we had anticipated that it would be slow participation, only because that was the feedback we got from other entities that were using it.
Right.
And surprisingly, there was much faster participation and much more participation from employees than anybody ever anticipated. And I think that's what kind of threw off the.
It could have, it could have been a factor, yes. And, you know, we're partners too with the county and the school district. And, you know, we've spoken to other entities about the clinic and how we operate, and, and it's, so far, I think we're, it, it's been helpful. It really has been a good investment, I think.
And just so, like, the newer council members know, is back when we did this, and to your point, taking the, the funds that were in there, rather than, you know, doing something else with them, because trends come and go. And if it ever got to a point, part of the reason why we reserved that is if we ever needed to go back to that, because we didn't know at the time, healthcare with government, and it still is. So if it ever became a time where it just, you know, it, the trend kind of goes back the other way, we would have resources in order to be able to do that.
And we've been pretty fortunate, I, you know, when the fully insured groups that we work with, they know we have a clinic, that's why they partner with us, because they believe that our employees are maybe a little more health-conscious. But when it comes to services, and then, you know, partnering with the people that work there versus their folks, sometimes that always, isn't always so seamless. And I think if we were to have a self-funded program, I think that might make that a little smoother. That might be one thing that would be improved with some of the other things that we talked about before, too.
So just to recap on, on page 12, and the big takeaway is you look at what impacts the levy. It's that the bottom line is, when you look at wages and all the benefits together, the 2.255, almost $300, or 5.48% increase is necessary. And it's, it's a $165,000 increase because of health and dental, and it's almost $2 million, almost $100,000 for wages. So you will see those numbers again, but they're, those are the ones that really impact our levy assumption going forward. If I may, I'd like to just go back to a question that was asked earlier about unclassified expenses. The unclassified expenses does include the write-off for ambulance fees, and that's running about $375,000 a year of that unclassified amount, and that was the 19?
Oh, that's annually, every year.
Yeah, so.
If I recall, though, that's down by half from, like, two years ago.
It could be, but I just wanted to let you know what was in that category.
Well, we switched companies, I know, that do go after our debt, and so that was one that helped, too. Seven years ago, I think it was like, three years ago, I think, we switched.
So in addition to the personnel costs, one of the biggest things that really looks, that you have to take into consideration, when you look at your levy and what could happen next year on the levy assumptions, I wanna turn your attentions now to page 13 and 14, which is really an analysis on our general obligation debt. And we have, we don't go back as far, because it's, on the debt, it's really more important to look forward. So we started with 2014. We have the existing debt. And just, I'll talk about the future debt in just a minute. But then each year, we retire some of that debt, and each year, we look at, you know, what's the ability to take on new debt? So you have the columns representing new debt taken out, and then what is the balance of our general obligation debt at, at the end of the year, the change from year to year? And when you look at debt, the state actually imposes a levy or a debt limit on municipalities. You can go up to 5% of your equalized value. So that equalized value comes back into play. So we have the actual equalized values through 2018, and we have a projection going forward. And then we have a debt limit, and then we talk in terms of how much of that debt is used. And the city and a lot of communities are looking at, you know, can we get to the 50% margin of our legal debt limit? Right now, the city of Oshkosh is exceeding that. We're at about 65%. So we look at actual debt to the debt limit as kind of an important calculation in terms of dollar amount and in terms of percentage. So as we go forward, we've taken on new debt, including new debt issued in 2019. We're projecting in 2020, and going into the future, we made the assumption, let's assume that we're gonna issue $15 million a year on new debt. And that $15 million then has an impact of the outstanding debt as it goes forward. So that's that future debt column. So it's a part of the new debt taken on. And then we made an assumption that our equalized value is gonna increase by 1% a year. So the highlighted is that increase in the equalized value that shows that if we took on, this basically tells you that if we took on $15 million of debt, starting in the year 2000, and that continued for up to the year 2029, and the assumption that the equalized value increases by 1%, based on those assumptions, we will get a lot closer to that 50% of the legal debt limit 10 years into the future.
And this goes back to discussion that council's previously had, that Russ, this is only Russ, Russ's fifth day on the job, but we haven't, we haven't had a lot of discussions on, on everything. He's been doing a lot of preparation for tonight, which I so appreciate. But the council, a few years ago, we were limiting ourselves to 11.4 million. This year, it was 11.5. Anytime you see us taking more debt on than that, it's because we did some debt restructuring. You can see the net reduction, real reduction in debt from the previous year ever since 2014. 2014 was the year that we did the WRS liability, so that was a big increase. But since then, we've had, we've, we've had a real reduction in our overall debt, which is very good. But the, I point that out, because Russ put in 15 million, because we talked about this with the Long Range Finance Committee. That's just an assumption. That's not a policy change from the council. Part of, one of the goals council gave me for this year is to develop a debt management plan. We'll be talking to Long Range Finance about that. But when we talked about favorable economic conditions, we can borrow more if we're more comfortable with it, but we have to be able to absorb additional debt. That's only if we have a decent increase in our equalized value. Over the last decade, we've had a reduction until the last couple of years. Is that a new trend, that we're gonna have an increase in our equalized value? Well, we certainly hope so. There's no guarantee. So we've gotta keep on, keep an eye on this. The idea would be the Long Range Finance Committee is gonna pick a target goal of where we want our debt limit to land by a certain year. And I'm just gonna say, for the sake of discussion, 2030, just because that's a, it's a nice arbitrary number. But how do we get our debt limit down there, yet still meet some of these capital needs that are out there for new parks building, new streets, trails, et cetera? Those all, those are all those issues. So Russ put in 15 million just as a place marker.
15, that's a big number.
That's a big number.
Considering, like you said, 11.4 was the spoken standard, just two years ago.
I kinda did a worst-case scenario to just to kind of see what's, what would happen.
But, you know, last year, we came into it, we came out of budget, and went up to, went into the chambers at a 12.4, and then that night, we added 1.5 on top of that for the Southwest Industrial Park. So when we walked away from budget that night, we were at 13.9, just under 14. And that was for a one-time expenditure. So that's a, that's a big favorable economic forecast condition that you're potentially forecasting, at least to, to show us what it possibly could look like.
You can put any number in there.
Of course.
If you did 12.4, whatever, you would get to 50% of your debt limit sooner.
Right.
Russ, and I'm, I'm new to the, I'm new to the public sector here, so what is the utopia number? Is it, is it the 50%? I mean, how do I get to a debt-to-equity number here? How do, how does that translate for me?
Yeah, it's not really a debt. Yeah, it's not really a debt-to-equity. This is just really debt as part of the statutory limitation. Most communities look at a percentage of the debt capacity established by the state of Wisconsin as a benchmark. And it varies from community to community, but there's a number of communities that try to stay in that 50% range.
What's a rock star community? Are they 40%?
A rock star would be zero.
No, but I mean.
There are some.
Appletons in single digits. I want to fully disclose that. Russ was in Eau Claire, Eau Claire you thought was about 35?
30 to 50, but depends on the projects that we had going forward.
We're higher than most.
It depends on the history of spending, depends on a whole variety of things.
And I can tell you that in today's environment, and I'm not trying to make this a political discussion, but communities are being strung so tight on operation that communities that used to finance capital projects with current tax dollars are getting pressured into no longer doing that. So there's a greater pressure to issue long-term assets, capital assets by debt. Number one, I saw debt markets when you were paying 16% interest rates. Now they're at four, or two, or whatever they are.
They're free right now, right.
And so the cost of money is really cheap. So people, all communities are struggling. And, and one of the things that I was working on and we actually adopted in Eau Claire was a debt management policy that said, what are our targets? You also want to look at not only the ratio of, of debt to the statutory limit, but you also want to look at how much of your budget is being consumed by principal and interest payments. That'll be the, probably the last part of the discussion tonight. We'll, we'll show you that number from 19 to 20. But you have to start thinking long-range, how much of your levy do you want going towards the payment of debt versus the payment of services? And there's no easy answer, and it's getting harder and harder because the economics are kind of forcing communities to, to finance capital projects with debt.
And I would say too, you know, to build on to what Russ is saying and, you know, the comments that Bill made, if you do know that you have capital needs and you do know the interest rates are at a favorable spot, do you wait to try to address those needs when you know what the interest rates are at this point? So it's, it's not an easy decision for councils to make.
If you get back to the basic concept, you know, what you're trying to do is look at your capital assets. How are you paying for it and who's paying for it? If you're paying on a cash basis out of levy, the people that are in the community now are paying for something that's going to benefit future generations. If you do a long-term approach and you pay the capital assets in an appropriate manner, so if you've got a 20-year asset, you're paying it over 20 years, the users of that asset are actually paying for it over the next 20 years versus the people that are in your community now, because that's always in flux. People are moving all the time, coming in, coming out. So it's that whole rationale.
Get two city managers for one tonight.
Yeah.
This is great. I'm just like.
Oh, it is. That's why I'm taking advantage of it.
The rationale is, you know, if there's nothing wrong with that, and it's nothing wrong in the current environment, but how do you match up that, that purchase of that asset to the people that are going to use it?
I, I just know in business, and again, this is all new to me, the public sector, the less debt you have, the stronger you, your company is for any hiccups that come down the road. And I can only assume it's a same for municipalities.
It affects our bond rating. I think the council members know that too. But you know, what do you do if you have needs too?
Yeah, which impacts.
If you talk to your financial advisor, they'll tell you that being at 65% is not a favorable thing when it comes to the moody's and the standards and poor's, the rating agencies rating your, your ability to pay.
That was one of the questions I think I've asked a couple of times, either in these meetings or even when, you know, our advisors are up there. We're trying to strive towards a possible number. What's, you know, what's that magic number? And how do we get there and when we get there? But if we get there, what's our payoff? It's not a whole lot and it's going to take a lot of effort to get there. Not that we shouldn't be striving for that goal, but it's a, potentially a small reward for some very tight years or some very, you know, very tough decisions.
I know the council too is, you know, it was mentioned earlier by one of the council members that we are, you know, through the efforts of a variety of people in the community, you know, we are, people are interested in the community and they want to develop here. And there's numerous opportunities that present themselves. And, you know, having the ability to respond to those things is going to be important too. Is it just because we want to get to a magic debt number, do we forego an opportunity for a development? You know, those are the sorts of decisions that, you know, are difficult for council. And I think it's important for the citizens to understand you're trying to balance all that stuff to the best of your ability when you're making these calls.
And that's why I think if we shoot for a long-term goal, we just work towards that and make progress towards it. If we do a little better, we can make a decision to do a little more. If we don't do as well, then we have to make a similar decision. Do we cut back and how much do we cut back to keep ourselves on pace to, to reach our goal? We can't, we can't have it both ways where we, we only take advantage of it when it's good and then we don't do anything when it's bad. We're going to have to adjust both ways. And there will be ups and downs in the economy and we're going to have to deal with those.
Russ, and this will be my last question from the new guy on this page. I said this page. Does this factor in us refinancing current debt? I mean, is that all taken into play?
Yeah, typically, typically the answer to your question is no. Typically, you would work with your financial advisor and say, when does it make sense? And it, and the market is changing all the time. And it just looks at the spread of what you can, you're paying on interest and what you could realize by issuing new debt. So this, this schedule does not take into that. My philosophy in my other communities, and I'm not sure if that's similar in Oshkosh is, if you, if you're refinancing, you either do it for the same term or less, less years, not extending it. Because then you're just extending your debt.
I'm talking more about the interest rate more than anything.
That's what we're doing though.
Right, right. And I just, I just, I didn't know if this factored in refinancing $50 million going from 4% to 2% or anything like that?
Nope, we're not. This is just straight debt that's outstanding. And the assumption is, as a placeholder, the $15 million is a new debt. And this does not commit you to that. It's just kind of.
So that does not include the, like the parks building?
What we did is we just put in a $15 million number.
We didn't identify any potential, at this point, your CIP would identify which projects you want to tackle and pay for.
What you spend it on is really up to you.
For the 2020 CIP, what you're going to see at this point is 12.4 million in borrowing based on council's direction last year. So that could change. So that's what we're putting into the CIP. The model that Russ is putting here is, is nothing more than that. It's a model. You can choose to go less or more depending on what your, what your comfort level is. To kind of answer Bill's question from earlier, if you take a look at the column that says debt, debt principal taken on, in four of the last six years, we've done some form of refinancing because that 11.4 million dollar number, we only did twice. But we, we had net reduction in overall debt as a result of each of those years because we did a refinancing.
We see the savings when we're looking at principal and debt payments for the year as part of our budget. You know, instead of, you know, 20 million, we're seeing it 19.5 or so on and so forth. That's where we, that's where we realized the gain.
So Ellers looks at that, Ellers looks at that on a regular basis, comes in and says, we recommend. So roughly, I think Matt hit the right number. It was like 13.9 that we truly borrowed. But we borrowed 21.8 million this year. So we refinanced about close to $8 million. It was a good deal.
Is that retired? Will reflect what we included in our principal and interest, our principal payments plus what we refinanced this year. So you'll see this like in the years that we did those refundings.
So I think the, the biggest thing with this is, and if I remember correctly, and this goes back before even like, you know, our time or, you know, even when, when Bob was on before, was that, and, and the council prior to that, you know, obviously made a good decision. Because to, to Mr. Roloff's point, for a long time, there hadn't been any spending. And then when Mr. Roloff came on and then the council at the time had made a choice to start to be aggressive in updating our infrastructure, you know, to kind of bring us up to speed and be competitive in the Fox Valley. And so, yes, and back a while ago, we did decide to do that because I can't remember how high, when I came on, the, the debt percentage was. But you know, obviously, you know, there's interest rate environment. Then it's also how does it impact moody's, which then of course goes towards or determines like our borrowing and what our interest and payment, interest and principal payments are going to be. But you know, we knew that at some point because we wanted to get to what, 70, 72%? We got there a little bit ahead of time. And so I know the discussion has come up about, you know, is 11.4 realistic? Do we need to move it up? But I think my only, my only comment would be to that is, if we were going to make a significant increase, I wish it was a year that we had gone through revising our strategic plan. Because I think having strategic, a strategic plan and knowing where priorities are helps prioritize if we're going to talk about, you know, millions more. Obviously, if, if we're serious about looking at increasing it this year and if, and it's not a year that we do it because we do it every other year, every two years, right? You know, maybe we need to have some type of session just to reevaluate our strategic plan to make sure that this is something we're going to look at. We're making sure that we know exactly where, where this money is going to go versus just kind of throwing a bunch of darts at it.
And I think there was some discussion about potentially moving up strategic plan, like earlier in the year, like perhaps January, but are you suggesting that maybe we do like a special session even prior to budget spacing?
It's just a comment I wanted to make. I don't think anybody has to answer it today. But you know, is that something, I guess I've been putting it out there and is that something we maybe want to discuss?
If we're going to do a major shift, major shift off of our strategic plan, then yeah, then I would agree.
But otherwise, as part of, as part of the normal budget process, you know, staff is coming through and advising, you know, just the recommendations on the CIP and their other investments. It's on them to make sure that it is corresponding to the strategic plan and our initiatives and our direction that we've given Mark and his staff, that these things are supposed to be already in line before they're even getting to us. And if they're not, that's a different discussion that we need to have.
And I would say too, I think councils did a good job when, when there was an economic downturn. The fact that we had the strategic plan and to Deb's point that we budgeted to support the components of the strategic plan. You know, our community got a lot of things done during that downturn time. So I think we were maybe a little more poised now, after the economy got better, to continue our improvement. So I think her point is well-taken that, you know, correlating your plan with your spending, it just keeps you on track.
The strategic off of somewhat of capping ourselves at 11.4. So I do, I, I trust staff to make good recommendations for the CIP. But that's also based off of an old number in which the strategic plan somewhat built off of. So that's, I'm just saying, if we're looking at maybe a 3.6 million swing in the other direction, we just want to make sure that that same plan is the one that we want moving forward. Because let's face it, the community still has a number of needs, whether it be, you know, community development or taking care of our employees or, you know, a number of things. Well, can't use CIP for taking care of employees, but buildings and things of that nature. So just a thought.
Instead of piecemealing it, coming together and saying, you know, for, for $3.6 million additional investment, what's our bang for our buck? How's it achieving more? Making sure that we're all.
Just a thought.
I guess what I'd like to see and is how we stack up cities our size in, in the state of Wisconsin, where we sit for this debt, I'm sorry, it's not a debt equity, percentage of debt limited use. Where we stack up to everybody?
He can get you that data.
That's a very, that's a very fair ask. We can provide that information.
Thank you.
It'd be relatively easy. I think we have that.
I think Ellers has provided it previously. And.
If it's old data, that's okay. But if they can update it, that'd be even better.
I think they update it every year, Bill.
We got it last year.
Okay. And don't, 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 don't build a clock if you've already got it.
Yep. We'll do that. In the interest of time, I think we, because we, we still need to get to the, sort of the, sort of the bottom line, whether, if you want to finish up on the debt. And then we, we did put something in the discussion about, you know, funding options for special assessments to at least give council the opportunity to kind of, they've had a week to kind of debrief after last week's meeting. So I think we've covered pretty much everything on page 13 and 14, haven't we, Russ?
Yeah, I was, that's how I was going to continue is, and I'm done with that unless there's any other questions. But I just wanted to note that in, if you look at the agenda that we had put together under debt was continued discussion on, so this is not in your booklet at all, but continued discussion on the funding options for special assessments. You know, you know, is, is debt an option? Is there some other option? Some other direction from council on where to go forward? So we kind of talked about the debt policy, but usually in communities talk about debt, they also talk about special assessments. Might be a four-letter word, but it's not. And, but it was asked to be placed in the agenda now would be the appropriate time to begin that discussion.
Don't everybody go at once.
I think as part of this discussion, without getting, we can, we can take it somewhere else too. But as part of looking at the numbers and the debt and, you know, cash flow and just the positives of, you know, is there taking on debt for projects or paying cash for projects? As you look at these numbers, it's a good reminder that if we have the opportunity to pay cash for projects, it can be really beneficial. It can really spur other development and use those dollars, even if we want to maintain the same debt borrowing, instead of even just reducing, if you want to maintain it, we can use those to, use those dollars to invest in other areas. And that's a good thing. And it helps us try to meet other goals. That's the one thing I would want to point out with, you know, paying cash for certain projects.
My discussions with council and, you know, feel free to chime in because I'm, I'm kind of speaking on behalf of seven different conversations I had of one form or another. Clearly, the council remains interested in looking for an alternative to special assessments. The council may have decided that one option at this moment in time is not the right option for them. And that's absolutely within council's purview. The question is, is what do you want the solution to be? If, if the option presented to you last Tuesday wasn't the answer, what other options do you want us to pursue? I think that's, but my belief is that everybody still feels pretty strongly they want to do something about special assessments. And that, and I'm, I'm seeing a lot of nods and that's, that's conversations that you've had with me. And the mayor and I have talked about this and I think that's why she asked that it be put on the agenda. Because that, that seemed to be the consensus of people coming out of Tuesday night.
And I appreciate your request that it could be put on. So we had a chance to have an open discussion tonight.
I guess my question would be is, is looking at options that in which just, you know, where residential business communities, you know, is there a way somehow through the state statute or through the city working with the county in which that could be spread over to somehow capture some of that cost off of the tourism that's coming in? Because in all fairness, I mean, you know, it isn't just our residents that are using the street. You know, we have a significant amount of tourism that's coming in for events. And because we do have a large, you know, E3 college, which certainly brings in and is a huge benefit to the community, but is there any way that somehow we can capitalize on that to help offset assessments?
Yeah, half, half percent sales tax, I think is what you're talking about. And, and again, we've got to reach out to the county. And I'll sit on any committee we want, along with some other individuals I've talked to to, to kind of meet with the county and talk about it.
Someone, I don't know if it was you that mentioned it, can the city impose a half percent sales tax with county approval, but it's not a county-wide sales tax?
I don't believe you can do that. I think the county in, in terms of uniformity would have to enact it county-wide. That's, I think, the only thing that the Department of Revenue would recognize.
So municipality in and of itself cannot impose a sales tax in?
Not without an act of the legislature.
It's like the R tax that we talked about.
Well, that's, and what, what is that called? It's the special or premier?
Called the premier resort tax. That is 0.1%. Called the premier resort tax. That is 0.1 percent. And, uh, you know, I mean, we can certainly look at that, but it is, Russ has studied this, uh, uh, more than I have. And it sounds like there's, it may take an act of the legislature. So, um, that'd be, that'd be a tough nut to crack. The county, uh, talked about a sales tax many years ago, dismissed it. I think in recent months, I believe there's only two counties left in the entire state that haven't, haven't enacted it. One's Winnebago, the other's Calumet. Um, but the real question is, is how you would do it? And that's, um, and you'd have to get the entire, uh, you have to get, I believe, uh, three quarters?
Super.
Super majority, three quarters of the entire county board to enact that. So you'd need 28 of 36 county board members to do that.
And that's not anything we'd be able to do quickly.
They, they can barely approve minutes on a, on a, so.
And how it's divided too is not going to be up to us either. It's going to be up to the county.
Right. I mean, some counties like Sheboygan, I think Sheboygan, Mandala, and most split it equally. I mean, based on population of the, of, of the cities in their community, then it trickles down to the township. So eventually everybody gets some piece of the pie of that half percent sales tax. But you're right, it's not going to be a fast fix.
To council member Peschall's point, that is going to take a little more lead time. And so there still has to be, you know, a short-term, at least a, an interim solution.
Well, that's stat, that's.
Otherwise, we just keep special assessing.
This has a status quo. How long have we been doing it? 75 years?
Yeah, we've been doing it darn near forever. And, uh, you know, we made the assumption, you know, we, we had to be careful because the council hadn't adopted. So the capital improvement program is budgeted at 12.4 million. We assumed that we might have to borrow for the whole thing, uh, as we did before, uh, and that we would continue special assessments. So we've got the ability to, to move on that. Obviously, people on Hazland, Oregon are going to be a little disappointed on that. But I don't know if there's a solution that we can immediately, uh, put on the table.
And looking at this year's CIP, I think I brought it up, we're, citizens are still going to be assessed for storm, storm, you know, any of the stormwater work down on their street, sanitary sewers and water laterals, correct?
Yes.
Still going to be assessed that. So really, the transportation fee was going to cover the concrete in the street and sidewalks. Basically taking those assessments off a city. What is that? I think in the CIP it was over three and a half million, I think.
Two.
3.2. All right. So, and I don't know what the sidewalk is off the top of my head and I didn't really look at it.
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred grand.
All right, eight hundred.
For the rehab portion, but you add another 200 for as part of all the other construction projects we do. We specially assess 200,000 in sidewalks.
So, so you had that all up and we're talking what, five million bucks?
No, the 3.2 includes the 1 million in sidewalks. So it's really, roadwork is 2.1-ish.
Okay.
And then sidewalk is one, one point.
All right. So how can we fund that? I guess that's the part, I think, for at least short-term. Is there a way for us as a city slash council to fund that, take that off of the citizens' backs? For 19 going into 20, that maybe that, by that time, we could maybe negotiate the county to think about a half percent sales tax. Because I think it also is important to get Nina behind it, Manasha behind it, Fox Crossing. Those are our biggest other communities in Winnabeau County. Then you start going on to townships, El Goma's the next biggest, Vinland's the next biggest and so on. So I think you need those people, those government bodies of those communities to get behind it also. We can't do it alone. So if they're not interested in pursuing it, that's going to make it even harder. But in the short-term, is there a way to fund those, the, the concrete and the sidewalk program for 19?
I would be hesitant to recommend that we eliminate special assessments without a dedicated funding.
Absolutely.
Because what if you don't convince the county?
Right.
Are you going to switch it again? Then you guys are in a tough spot.
And that's, that's the issue. And that's, I'm bringing it up. Is, is there a short-term solution?
Short-term?
Short-term is special assessments as is, that's, that's.
Fortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately, that is.
Probably it, yeah.
So, I mean, I think we're looking.
Saw that idea out there to if anybody had.
But I think everybody wants to come up with a solution. I don't think there's one single person here that does not want to come up with a different solution. So.
As a city, can we impose like an increase on the tobacco, um, alcohol?
We don't have, we don't have those.
We have zero weapons, Jake. Zero.
Fees and charges, I mean, the transportation fee was admittedly, it was, you know, this, that was a controversial issue. Um, that you struggled with that and I, you know, that's just the reality. But, you know, the, all this talk about old cities increasing fees, I think Russ showed you, you know, Russ has no, Russ has no dog in this fight. He's just laying out the facts. We have not increased by our fees by very much.
And all those reductions that he illustrated were not replaced with any other.
Offsetting revenues.
And quite honestly, being new to the council, I didn't realize how much the, the state was squeezing us. It's, it's absurd. It's, it's a joke. I mean, they're criminals. So they are.
We've said that before, it goes on.
Mark, Mark made a good comment and I just want to, uh, you know, the, the struggle with the transportation utility fee. Uh, I respect the struggles that everyone had with that, with that proposal. Uh, it wasn't an easy one. And so I just want to say I do respect that you guys took it, uh, to heart and really tried to take a look at, you know, benefits, costs, impacts. And, and that's a good thing. Um, it may be beneficial, um, I think, you know, Mr. Miller had alluded to it, to bring some community members together and, and have a different discussion and see if there's, um, you know, is there another path? What can we do going forward? Uh, we, I think most of us agree. Uh, I know Bob did mention he likes special assessments. I did catch him on camera saying that. He did say those words. Uh, but I think most, most of us can agree that, um, it seemed as though we came away from that discussion as we'd like to see something else in its place. Um, so what is that something else and how do we get there? I don't know that it can go back to the Long Range Finance Committee for any more or any better, um, input at this point. They've done a thorough job. They did a fair job. They did, they did a lot of analysis for us. I don't know that they're going to come back with a better solution at this point. It may be beneficial to, to get some more minds and, uh, and put them in a room to start talking.
Well, and it to go to that point, um, there were several people that spoke last Tuesday that seemed to be interested, that may be interested in some type of ad hoc committee appointed by the mayor. Give them a short timeframe, give them some parameters of what council might be wanting to look for. We want to make sure that the business communities represented. We want to make sure the citizen communities represented. I think the nonprofits, because there were a lot of churches that found out in the 13th hour that they were now going to be paying for assessments when they previously weren't. So I think, I think we, well, they were paying.
Yeah, they always pay.
I think some of them realized for the first time that even if they've never been special assessed, that they were subject to them. And it was a, a wake-up call to them. It's like, you mean, we could be special assessed too?
Yes.
The answer was, well, yeah.
Right. And I guess that's right, what I meant.
Food ban, Jackson is a great example. That's a, that's a concrete paradise. There's not a stitch of grass on that thing.
Right.
Every square inch of it would have been, you know.
Yep. So I, you know, I think the nonprofit community needs to come to, be at the table. So you don't want to make it too big and too cumbersome because then it's always hard to, to get consensus on meeting dates and times and things like that. But I do think if we're going to commit it, at least we need to have a broad representation of the community that we represent.
And I think it needs to be proportionate too, as well as a defined timeframe for study.
In the interest of time, I mean, I think the mayor wanted to get everybody out on the table, at least talk about it. There's pretty good consensus here. Uh, I guess what I'd suggest is let's put it on the agenda about, and if you want to give some thought to what profile of what a committee would look like to address this issue. You know, it's budget season, it's a little busy. I'll, I'll, I'll do whatever the council asks of us. But just recognize that, uh, you know, timing might be a little tough, but, uh, we'll get it going and, uh, maybe get a plan of attack and how we want to look.
What's nice is you and, and staff have done a lot of work product and it's still good work product. And no matter what we choose to do at some point or not even choose, but just to discuss it, the work product you have still stands.
Right.
I mean, it all, it's all there.
I appreciate that. And I think.
The committee's got that information. They have the, from a couple of years ago, the wheel tax presentation. So they would have that information. That's not so old or outdated. And I did, for, for all council members, I did send Mr. Roloff an, an email early last week to have it put back on the agenda under council discussion and direction of the city manager and staff. So, um, I think that's a good place to put it. And I think we can come up with something at the next council meeting and move forward. I think we owe it to our citizens. We owe it to all residences and our businesses in our schedule to come up with something other than assessments, if that's the consensus of this council.
Well, and I think too, learning a lesson, um, you know, if, if we bring this up again and, and we explore options. Because to be honest, I mean, nobody should have counted on not paying an assessment this year.
Right.
It had to be voted on, which there's a 50/50 chance it would either pass or fail. So, you know, to be honest, everybody should have planned for an assessment in 2018 until it was passed. Or we should have said that if we pass it at some point this year, it would be active to, uh, 2020. So I think we definitely, we can learn from the communication and probably do a little bit better in that regards.
We've just, uh, the letters that we sent the residents identified that council's considering it, but we're giving you these estimates in the event that nothing happens. So, uh, but not everybody reads that. They usually read what the assessment is and they read the headlines and, um, and the room with it. Appreciate the feedback and we will put that on the next council agenda. Thank you. Russ, if you want to continue with some of the, uh, uh, kind of the assumptions that, just a little discussion about some of the assumptions that went into personnel costs on, I guess, page 15?
Yeah, um, we're starting on page 15 if we go back to the booklet. And what we've really done is, uh, started the work and getting the information out to the departments. We kind of do a central estimate on wages. Um, I gave you the summary of that. We went in, like I said earlier, with a 2.5 percent wage increase. We said that, um, there would be no new positions included in that scale. And then all new budget, uh, uh, positions would have to be going through the budget enhancement form that, that the city currently uses. Benefits, we talked a little bit about WRS. Um, if you look on page 15, um, we talked about the 3 percent, excuse me, let me backtrack. The 3.8 percent increase in the health insurance and the 12 percent that the employees pay. Uh, we talked about the 3 percent dental. And then, uh, retirement is account number 6304. General employees, which is every, basically everybody but non-protective services. We do know that for 2020, the employer, uh, the total share is 13.5. The employer's share is half of that, 6.75. The employee picks up the other half. Um, and that was one of the changes with Act 10. You just have some history on what was done in the previous year. So you can see that's up like about four tenths of a percent. WRS for protective, uh, services goes up even more. Um, and protective services, believe it or not, actually have an option of not being covered under social security. I think most of the.
That's primary or fire.
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 Yep. And, um, so that's in play. Um, are they, are the new fires still have that option or is that just older?
All fire.
All, all fire?
All fires still have this option.
Kind of lost track of that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, that, that was a little bit more than almost a percent and a half. Um, and then you can see the protective, uh, without is even up higher. So that's, that all goes into play in that, that sheet that I, we were talking about on page 12. In addition, we looked at what's happening with some of our utilities. Unfortunately, when we put the, uh, information together, we had only partial of year information for 2018. That's footnoted, uh, because we only had collected data on the utilities through part of 2018. So that's why if you look at the average consumption, they're, they're down, uh, along with the rates. So page 16 is all utility costs and I don't need to go through that.
What, one line?
Mark, oh, Mark.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mark, the reason I'm asking Mark, Russ, is he's, he may have a better answer. Do we commodity contract any of these for a year? Price, prices?
No, we do it on a, uh, uh, we do it on a, a transport basis. We bid out every transport, uh, on annual, on a, on a, as needed basis.
So as a, so every tanker, you, you bid every tanker?
Yeah, we do a competitive bid every tanker.
So have we looked at ever commodity contracts for the year, anything like that when prices are low?
I'm, I'm not aware of, uh, in local government where that's done because of the, the volatility and the risks that's assumed. Um, it's pretty much just done on a transport basis.
Okay.
Russ, you have any experience with that?
No, I was pretty much common practice, I thought.
Yeah. Um, I mean, we get a, we get a decent rate, uh, but it's, uh, you know, we don't have to pay, uh, taxes on those. We're not subject to those. You can see the price we pay is, is less than the, the pump rate. But you can see that the volatility, you know, one of the reasons Public Works went down, if, when you looked at the trend, was, uh, all the fuel for the city in the general fund is purchased out of Public Works. And we were paying, you know, 350 as, or as recently as 2013. And now we're down to 241 as of 2018. So over five years, we went down over a dollar a gallon. That was savings directly that went to us. Transit saved a lot on that too. But you can see that that, the commodities are, uh.
That affected Public Works's reduction maybe a little bit through budget.
Oh, absolutely. Yo, I'm convinced of that.
I saw that earlier.
Um, council member Peschall asked me the question about compressed natural gas. We really started that with some of the garbage trucks a few years back. And some of the other departments, uh, jumped on that bandwagon, which we're encouraged about. We never had enough uses that we ever put a CNG station in ours. We, we developed a very good relationship with QuickTrip and we purchased our CNG from there. But in recent years, the, um, the new diesel engines are so much leaner burning that we've steered towards, uh, the cleaner diesel fuel as our alternative. So we still take a look at compressed natural gas as a, with most of them, unless there's a performance issue. But generally parks, Public Works, they're evaluating both alternatives when they take a look at it. But to be honest with you, in recent purchases, we've been sticking with diesel.
Quick question, you mentioned, and it's obviously it's footnoted too, it's only through the first six months of 2018. But the way you worded it, did we stop collecting data at that point or we just don't?
We just haven't updated our information yet.
Okay.
Apologize. That's, um, what we had. Pages 17 and 18, um, are just current, um, utility rates. And believe it or not, we still have to pay utilities back to our own utilities, uh, for non-utility departments. So, um, we, we give that out to the departments as well and make those assumptions when preparing the budget.
And then we also, and we're expecting a solid waste, a dollar increase in the tipping fee over at the, uh, at the landfill. So that'll hit our, um, our refuse budget as well.
So they want to charge us more, but they don't want to give us more?
No, because they have to haul it now. It's just a transfer station. They're hauling it up to Green Bay every day.
So those are all the assumptions that we're giving the departments in terms of, here's, here are the assumptions you make. You know, expect these types of increases. And as far as the policy goes, this is, um, in terms of assumptions given department with wages, we're telling them any new positions have to be done through enhancements. Uh, they can't be included in the base budget. The staffing analysis that was done, uh, for police, uh, some of those are factored into 2020. Nothing from fire yet. You're going to be getting the fire presentation within the next, uh, 45 days. And then, uh, the benefits we talked about, utilities and fuel. So the direction to departments is operating costs that we haven't identified here, um, 0% over, uh, previous year's budget. That'll exclude costs related to wages, benefits, utilities and fuel, because we know there's, those are commodities that are out of their control. Now with that said, when things go down like fuel, we, we cut the budget as well. That's just the, they don't benefit nor hurt by, uh, by those, uh, those commodities. So that's pretty much the direction we gave, uh, to departments as they were starting their budget. But now there's the levy impact and now I'm going to let Russ do that because, uh.
Thanks, Mark.
One quick question, the way you just, the way you said something on the, the commodities with the fuel and things like that, they don't get hurt or benefit from price reductions and savings in there. So for example, we, we're just going to use round numbers, but we budgeted a million bucks for fuel. They come in at 800,000. They're not, the department's not saving that 200,000, but we levied for it and/or took debt out for it, however we wanted to do it. So we brought the money in. So.
It gets returned, it returns to the, the general fund balance. And that basically has been part of the reason that our, um, our reserve has gone up. But the reserve is always a function of expenditures. Expenditures go up, our need for that fund balance goes. We still have the, our fund balance policy of 16 percent. We're in excess of that, which is a good thing. And that, it just gets returned. The department doesn't keep it. And in that case, when it's 800, when we budgeted a million, it's 800. The department doesn't keep it, and in that case, when it's 800, when we budgeted a million, it's 800,000, you know, we pull out, I mean, all kidding aside, we pull out our crystal ball type of thing and say, where do we feel comfortable budgeting that? In a lot of cases, what we've done, we haven't completely said, well, it was 800,000 this year, now let's cut it back to 800,000. We sort of, I mean, Bill, you asked the question, you know, do you do with commodities? We don't, but we kind of do, but in that case, we might go to 900 or 950. We're not dropping it all the way to 800, because, you know, we're one incident in the in the Middle East away from paying $4 a gallon. So we have to be careful of that, and that's what we do. With that, Russ prepared a revised sheet from what was shown on the back. But Russ, if you want to explain the handout instead of the one on the final page.
Again, some things changed a little bit, and there was a couple of things that I needed to correct. So this is basically some of the budget assumptions. If you look at the levy for 2019, we levied 39,401,600. Just doing 1% increments, what they mean, there's a blue shading on 1.47%. Right below the assumptions for increases, the first thing that happens is the debt, principal and interest payments needed in 2020 is 579,831 more than the levy that was necessary in 2019. So out of the gun, we have a levy increase that we've already committed to by the issuance of debt and the resolution that corresponded, that the city council passed for paying the principal and interest payment in the year 2020, is going to go up by that 579,000.
And I'll just add to that, the reason that number's going up is in recent years, as we've identified assets that we're purchasing in our capital improvement plan that have a shorter life than 20 years, we've been shifting that borrowing over to 10-year. So it's sort of like you pay more for a 15-year versus a 30-year mortgage. We're paying more, because it's a better long-term solution, but you do pay more for the shorter term.
Okay, so going back to that page 12, we talked about the wage and benefit increase, and we assume 2.5% across the board, but it also has basically nondiscretionary items built into that in that we've already have labor contracts settled with police and.
Police, fire, and transit.
Transit.
All of them.
All of them, okay. So that's already built into that. That's part of that $2 million that I told you you had to remember from page 12, $2,899,74. And if the health and dental stuff comes in at 3.8% increase on the health insurance, 3% on the dental, we're looking at another increase of 165,275. If you add all of that, including the debt, you're looking at a potential levy increase of $2,835,800, which is a 7.2% increase in your levy.
That assumes no additional revenues and no additional changes in staffing. But it's, this is much higher than you've seen in recent years. I mean, for those council members who've been on for several years, that, but we wanted to make sure this. And now we're making some very broad assumptions, and it's still the last day of July, but in nine weeks, you're going to get a budget, and it's going to be balanced. That's, you know that that's what you're going to get. But to balance it, we got to come up with 2,835, just on status quo. So that's the challenge that we have before us, that over the next nine weeks, we're going to be working with departments to do that. If it was all on the levy, it would represent a 7.2% increase. As you look at the history, that's higher than anything council's approved in the last decade. I know that that's not going to be acceptable to council, but recognize, you're hearing it from us tonight, because we got, we got our work cut out for us, and and that's what, that's what we're staring down.
We see that number in the budget. I don't know, how does that meet expenditure restraint?
Thank you, Russ. Thank you, Matt.
A little footnote on here, we haven't taken that into consideration, and obviously.
I know that, but considering last year's levy, going right up to it was only a 4%.
Right, so we have to figure that out as well, and we we have to comply with expenditure restraint. That's a million-dollar decision if we don't. So, yeah, we've got to do that on top of everything else. So we got our work cut out for us. We're going to have to take a look at, you know, we haven't met with our health insurance folks yet. We'll find that out, but we can't just balance this on the back of health insurance completely. But this is what we're staring down, and first budget work session, the idea is to give you an idea of where we think we're going to be when we deliver the budget to you, and right now, that's what we're looking at.
Mr. Roloff, have we gotten anything back from our state folks, legislature, about whether or not we can anticipate any revenues back from the state to make us whole from the personal property tax we lost?
There are some minor increases that we're going to be expecting with last year's cut in personal property taxes. But as as Trina pointed out to the council at that work session that we had with our legislators back in the winter, it's not making us whole, because it was supposed to make us whole, but it ignored a whole section of exemptions that were given to to businesses that requested it. So, no, we're not being made whole completely.
And I think that just adds to why our residents are fatigued, you know, with the constant increases in property taxes, fees, and things like that, is obviously because we have to, every time we're cut short, we then, that's our only way of trying to recoup.
Fatigue's probably a very apropos word.
Any, any new news on transportation aids? I thought there was some revisions or something that came out this week.
There will be some increases, and we'll get that information. You know, the state's supposed to get it to us in mid-September. We typically get it about a week before the budget goes out. So we're kind of putting a number in there and hoping that it holds to it. I know some cities, they'll deliver the budget to the council in mid-September, but the revenues aren't even done yet, and so you're really guessing at it. I prefer to try to have some solid numbers, that you have a good confidence level that they're going to be good. There are times when we've gotten the number in late October, and then, as Russ mentioned earlier, sometimes even the state doesn't give us the final manufacturing numbers, and, you know, we're projecting, I won't say guessing, but we're projecting on what the final values would be. So we try to hold it until the last minute, and hopefully the number doesn't change appreciably, so that, you know, if it, if it goes down 50,000, then suddenly, we got to cut 50,000 to balance out. Expenditure restraint is still, we can't ignore that. For this discussion here, we did ignore it. That's, but we have, we have nine weeks to to figure that out.
Why don't they get anything from the state, you know, legislature at least? They're not even going back in session until.
We know that there'll be some increase in some state transportation aids, but they're relatively minor. I mean, we're not talking, you know.
Any impact.
We'd be lucky if we got $100,000 more. I'm just being straight up with you. So this is always the toughest part of this, the first session, because I usually do this at the end, so don't blame Russ completely, but.
Oh, new guy.
But this, these are the things that we face.
My last day is going to be tomorrow. Well, I think, you know, you, I think you had on there, you wanted a little bit of direction. You know, I, to Matt's point, you know, we can't violate that restraint, so I guess we couldn't do any more than we did last year. So I don't know, you know, I mean.
And that's base, that's no improvements, that's no enhancements, that's just.
That's correct.
Status quo.
Yep.
At the moment.
And we've been doing status quo for at least the last two or three years, I think.
We did add a little bit of public safety.
We've been adding people here and there.
But you're going to get the fire study, and, you know, the fire guys are going to say, well, you did it for police, what about us? And that's, and that was a council, council said, public safety, police, and fire. But our resources to to fund those are pretty limited, because the number that Russ gave you, we're 75% personnel with our service-oriented agency. It's 90-plus percent for police and fire. I mean, they do a lot of things very efficiently, and, you know, their their training budget for a $10 million department, their training budget is $20,000. We're not going to solve this by cutting training budgets and things like that. It's 90-plus percent. I think with fire, it's 94% personnel. So it's all about the people and the, and good people that provide a very needed service that we, we, council appreciates, you know, and they've expressed that appreciation.
And per capita, our police and fire provide that service at a much better rate than almost anybody in the state. There's some, there's some information that just got shared from the state just this week. Yep, Department of Revenue just shared some good information, but things that we already knew, but just confirmation that comparative to our, our similar cities, you know, they're providing it at a very cost-effective way.
And not to pile on to the depressing wood, but Russ mentioned, you know, this before, and just to point it out, that section that talks about wage and benefits increase, and we have 2.5 there for the non-reps, but that number, the 2 million, that includes the contracts that we committed to for police, fire, and transit, too. So, you know, I would say that those increases are not discretionary, just so you're aware.
What about cutting back in HR?
That's where the fat is.
I think right at the top.
Yes.
And there's also some, you know, potential mergers in programming and facilities. I mean, we are assuming those are some other unwritten assumptions, right, that aren't necessarily documented here, that we are operating as we always have. And and I guess that's, you know, something that we also should at least consider.
You're suggesting some consolidations and some, that there's other areas to become more efficient in? Be interesting to to hear.
Have you, Fitz, you brought up, every couple of years, you brought it up, and then salary compressions. We kind of dealt with that a little bit last year. You anticipating any issues there this year?
Well, based on the proposed increase, no, for the non-rep folks.
But we are going to have to look at some market adjustments of refuse. You guys, I know several of you have been approached by refuse employees that are concerned about it, and their concern's legitimate, and we we have the data to support it.
And just to build on what Mark is saying, and I appreciate you asking, because that's something that, you know, we're going to have to address at some point. I think when we did the mini-study, we talked to the council members that were there at the time and for the folks that, you know, weren't there. We're experiencing, we're doing a pretty good job, I think, with our turnover and our recruitments, but we're experiencing difficulty at the lower pay ranges. It's most difficult to get people at those pay ranges, and also seasonal employees, because there's just so much competition at that level. And specifically for the full-time employees, we have, we're hiring our sanitation operators at the control point now. So you know that description, that explanation that Mark made earlier, where we we try to hire people at the men and then below the market, and then work them up as they become more experienced? That's been more difficult for Michelle and her folks with our sanitation operators. So we've talked to James, James has talked about, we've looked at other communities. Other communities incorporate additional duties into their sanitation operator's job descriptions, like, for example, additional snow removal and other items, and that's something that I know James is willing to incorporate into those jobs. And based on that, I think, you know, we believe that modifying the pay for those folks is probably appropriate.
You put a, put a paw in front of a garbage truck, there you go.
Full duty.
No, but what happened.
They do it in Chicago.
In reality, they get done, they get done, and they do their routes in eight hours. And meanwhile, the public, the snowplow drivers are working 12, you know, 14-hour shifts. If you can put some of the garbage drivers out in the street, then you just, you stretch the hours that the plows can be available.
That's a great idea.
Reduce the burnout.
Reduce the burnout.
And get their payoff.
And we have all hands on deck, you know, with Parks folks, too, so I think that that would be something that would be a good improvement, and we might be able to address this pay.
That goes back to the mayor, in a sense. She just mentioned some consolidation or job expansion within the job.
So we are looking at that sort of thing, but we do have a lot of positions that are combination positions already, that, you know, one particular person is doing multiple jobs. So I'm not saying it can't be done, but we're always looking for that kind of opportunity.
You see the workshop for August 21st is there. We'll have the audit. Jennifer just put the final touches on our CAFR, so that'll be going to print fairly soon. Appreciate all the work Jennifer's been doing to get that going. And then just some of our 2020 financial model, more projections, just, you know, we'll be three weeks wiser in terms of where we are, and we'll have that information for you. We provide an annual TIF summary, so you get a good idea of where we are with each of the tax center and districts, and then the fund balance update. We had a very good year, and and we'll be able to report on that. We added $1 million to fund balance for a variety of reasons. We can take a look at that, how we do that. I mean, that, there's an opportunity to take a look at funding mechanisms. And then, in just six months, and then some more historical numbers and where we rank. So some of the questions that that you raised, we can maybe provide some more information. I jotted down the debt comparison. I think we, that's a good one to have council be aware of. We could do better in that regard, and you'll get an idea of how much more we can do. So that's it, six minutes later than we normally schedule for, so.
And just a reminder to staff and to council, I mentioned it on Tuesday. I am out of town at a conference for three days on our next council workshop, but I'll make sure.
We'll get you all the info. And the mayor, that's all we have.
Workshop is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone.